9:03 a.m. and I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. We have a quorum of six. We actually now have a vacancy, Mr. Gomez has resigned. Okay, so first item is the consent agenda. The commission may request for consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation and public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for staff approval with no opposition received today. Since some of the items on the consent agenda may require a public hearing, the commission will accept public comment on any item on the consent agenda in one public hearing. We have the February and March minutes, and then we have a bunch of subdivision plats. And I'm going to pull, I think, all of these subdivision plats except number three, RP 2307 Eckert's Edition. So, 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6, I'd like to pull and discuss with you guys. And on the minutes...
Sherry gave us revised minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Hi, Sherry. We have March?
Yep.
We have the March minutes. We don't have the February minutes, right? Or do we?
I mailed it back to you. I probably did not get the print at this point.
Okay. Have you reviewed the February minutes?
Yeah, I sent comments back. There was a few things that changed. I think that's been taken care of. So, I'd move to approve.
Okay.
The minutes and the remaining item on the consent agenda.
Number three. All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes and item number three.
Second.
And we have a second. Yes, sir.
Do you open a public hearing on...
Oh, sorry. I need to do that. So now, I'm going to open public comment on the consent agenda. If anyone wishes to speak, come forward, state your name and address or single member district. Thank you, John, for reminding me. All right, I'm going to close public comment. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes and item three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six, zero. All right. So the first item on the consent agenda that wasn't approved is FP 2313, Gem Far subdivision, Block 1, Section 1, a request for approval of a final plat of the Gem Far subdivision, Block 1, Section 1 being .17 acres of land out of Washington County RR. CO survey number 182, abstract number 7685, described and recorded, and instrument number 202117404.
Zach Rainbow, Planning and Development Services, this is FP 2313. They are final plating one residentially zoned lot. The conditions of the plat are tax certificate, sidewalk or an exception requested, which they have, do not require the sidewalk. They are then fine with the public improvements. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so I'm reading note two, and there's a discussion about either making the road wider or putting a sidewalk in.
Correct.
And we had talked about, when we went through all of this sidewalk discussion within fill lots, I thought the consensus was that we weren't going to require sidewalks if they weren't within a certain distance of a school and there weren't existing sidewalks in the area.
Yeah, the issue here is with the sidewalk ordinance, that process was made an administrative process, so you all don't approve the sidewalk variances to speed that up. Basically, they request that of staff, and staff can approve those. In this case, they have not yet requested that. So our standard comment still has to apply that basically says, build the road with the sidewalk or seek a variance.
Okay, well, so if it's down to administrative, I mean, I hate to be in a position where someone's come in to approve a plat, they haven't asked about the sidewalk, maybe they don't know about it. We approve it, and it goes to you guys, and now there's a big debate and discussion about the sidewalk. You know, for me, and I look at this plat, I don't see any reason for a sidewalk personally.
And that's likely the case. It's just that we just received that request, and so it takes approval of Planning Director and the city engineer, and it just hasn't been reviewed fully. My suspicion is it'll be approved in this case, but ideally, on a plat like this, they would submit that sidewalk request earlier in the process, and when it comes to you all, you would know whether or not it was approved.
Okay.
I'll also add, though, in the case where, let's say, staff doesn't approve it.
Yeah.
They still have an appeal to you all, so...
Right.
They still have that opportunity. If they disagree with our decision, and ultimately, you all would be the final decision, it's just, it doesn't have to go to you all every time...
Okay.
...is the reason we made that administrative. It would only go to you on appeal.
Okay, so we have this one on the consent agenda. It has this note on it. Do you want us to consider the sidewalk while it's in front of us?
No, again, I don't think under the current ordinance, you have the ability to do that at this point.
Okay. All right.
You could clearly make a comment and weigh in if you have a particular feeling about it.
Okay.
But it has to go through the administrative process. But again, that normally takes just a couple days.
Okay. I don't have anything else, Zach. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else have questions or comments? All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Russell Gully with SKG. I guess her question is, and we try to, now that we have the sidewalk ordinance, we try to reflect on that and know going in if the sidewalk's going to be required, kind of advise the clients so that they know if we need to ask for the variance or not. Since interpretation, we missed some of them, don't realize until staff kind of brings it up to us. But I guess on this one, is a sidewalk required because of the street width or because of one of the conditions of the sidewalk ordinance?
The street width is 36 feet, so with the four feet, it meets the minimum of the 40 feet. It's also an arterial, I believe. I don't have the staff report in front of me. But with the exception allowance that Jack did request, I believe staff is going to recommend approval. So the comment was made.
And the short answer is, yes, it's the street width, because the ordinance says it can be 36 feet with a sidewalk or 40 feet without a sidewalk. Since it's not 40 feet, then you can do one, you can get it that one of two ways. One, you could request a street width variance, which the commission could resolve, or you can go through the separate route and keep the 36 feet by asking for a waiver from the sidewalk. Does that make sense?
It makes perfect sense, but we, along with the sidewalk ordinance, we also adjusted the street, the minimum street width for these infills. So depending on the classification of what crock it is, you know, if it's a local street, it's 26 feet. If it's a minor collector's street, it's 36 feet. Either case, we meet that condition for the minimum, so that's why we were maybe confused thinking that...
And I'm confused, to be honest with you. I don't guess I understand the ordinance. If we have an infill lot, just like this one, with existing homes around it, I wouldn't think that a sidewalk or a road width improvement would be a solution that we would want to consider if it created an irregular jog within the street.
No, and I'd say 95% of those get approved.
Okay.
It's just the process to approve that exception. Again, it just has to be reviewed by the city engineer and the planning director.
Okay.
Like I said, almost all of those are approved.
I'm just confused on whether it's actually an exception or variance or not. I didn't believe that it was.
And I think that's kind of, for a lot of these, or several of these that Travis pulled a little bit was our confusion. It's an infill lot, it's a local street, and maybe it's 36-foot pavement or something less than a full 40.
Even if it's 26 feet, if it's an infill lot, I don't, if there's no sidewalks within, you know, a four or five-block radius, I don't see a need to require a sidewalk in the middle of the neighborhood on a new lot.
Or a jog in the street.
Or a jog in the street. I'm not trying to open this up into a big, broad issue, but...
We'll go back and take a look at that, because I see what you're saying, and I think, I guess the question is, is a request even necessary?
Right.
Or is it basically automatic based on the way we wrote the ordinance? And I think you may be right, that it, that may be an automatic thing that we don't need to even do the variance or waiver request at all.
Okay. Thank you, Russell. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six, zero. The next one is FP 2316, Final Plat of Southland Hills Addition, Section 23. Request for approval of a final plat of Southland Hills Addition, Section 23 being 5.13 acres out of that certain 37.506 acre tract described and recorded in volume 249, page 258, Official Public Records of Real Property, Tom Green County, Texas.
Okay, Zach Rainbow, Planning and Development Services, this is Final Plat 2316, Southland Hills, Section 23 subdivision. This was just rezoned to allow the RS3 variations, or I believe, so it allows town homes, patio homes, and allows for the smaller lot sizes.
Okay, so on this one, Zach, I'm looking at the notes again. It says required minimum 30-foot wide right-of-way, 36-foot pavement with a sidewalk or 40-foot without a sidewalk. I don't think that's right. I think there's a typo or something on the notes. And then on the second note, illustrate required construction of the continuation of Maplewood Drive, a minor collector, a minor collector's street, meeting the requirements for a rural minor collector with a minimum of 30 feet of pavement, curb and gutter not required. My thought was that all of Southland had curb and gutter.
That's correct. I think that's a typo where the, we have a standard list of comments that we copy and paste, and it looks like the rural comment got included accidentally instead of the urban one, which...
Okay.
Yeah, so that should be the urban street standard with curb and gutter.
Can you guys help us fix that note? And whatever the, on the summary page on the thoroughfare plan, it says required minimum 30-foot wide right-of-way. It's got to be more than 30 feet if you want 30 feet of pavement, right?
Right.
Or 36 feet of pavement, yeah. And then I saw that the zoning is PD, and there's RS3 zoning requested patio homes. This was that site that I believe was multifamily zoned before. Is that correct?
I believe so, it was RM3.
And so what is the nature of the PD? Why isn't it just straight RS3?
Trying to remember the applicant may remember the...
That's because I was single-family lots.
That's right. RS3 is for townhomes, those kinds of things.
Zero lot line, right.
And zero lot line, but it actually doesn't also allow single-family. And so they wanted the flexibility to do either or, and so the PD basically allows RS1 or RS3.
Okay. Got it. So what do we do on the, do you want us to continue this case? Do you want to tell us what the proposed changes to the notes are? How do y'all want to proceed with this one?
Do you have the notes in front of you, Sherry?
No.
I had the wrong staff, you gave me the wrong staff report. Do you have, we have the Southland Hills for the notes. If you want to make a notation for the notes, we can change that before it moves on to council, and we can add that to the notes.
And I think what I can do is, I just pulled up another case that has the correct comment.
Okay.
So it would basically say the minimum of 40 feet or 36 feet with a four-foot sidewalk.
So it's a 40-foot right-of-way?
No, that's actually the pavement width, and then the standard right-of-way for a local street is 50.
With curb and gutter?
Correct.
Okay, so just to clarify, it's going to be a 50-foot right-of-way for Maplewood Drive with 40-foot pavement or 36 and a sidewalk, and there is required curb and gutter?
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to open this one up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this one, please come forward. All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Move to approve of the changes that we discussed or corrections.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve with changes to the note two as discussed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six, zero. All right. Number four, RP 2309, Second Replat of Kirby Subdivision, Block 8. Request for approval of a second replat in Block 8. ES Kirby subdivision being the north 76.6 feet of the south 135 and a half feet of And I think this one, Zach, is going to be the same.
Yeah, it's the same comment.
This is the sidewalk discussion item again, so I don't know that we need to continue the discussion much further. I'm going to open it up for public comment.
On those, Russell with SKG Engineering, on those, do we need to strike the note or revise the note, or the condition, since it's not necessarily applicable in this case? They talk about it up in the beginning about it, you know, meeting the requirements or the widths and stuff, but then later on in the conditions, it says you've got to do this stuff, so that was kind of the confusing part of...
Right.
Since we meet the new, the street width requirements, we stopped asking for all these variances because it met the infill, kind of those existing street width, so...
In this case, we can strike that comment.
Okay, so we can strike note two?
Correct.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Striking note two.
Striking note two.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve, striking note two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six, zero. All right. The next two look like they kind of go together, 5 and 6. PP 2306 Riverwood West, Section 2. Request for approval of a preliminary plat of Riverwood West. And FP 2314 Riverwood West, Section 2. Request for approval of Riverwood West, Section 2, being 6.161 acres out of the Friedrich Klamberg survey. 161 abstract, number 1553, Tom Green County, Texas, and being out of a 74.08 acre tract as described indeed from Suez Temple Building Company Incorporated to Edwin A. Wildey and wife Clarice M. Wildey dated November 25, 2009, and recorded as instrument number 678914 in the Official Public Records of Tom Green County, Texas.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sherry Bailey, Senior Planner. This is actually the second time you have seen this larger subdivision. It is out in the joint jurisdictional areas, just outside of the city limits. You have had, as I indicated, one smaller portion of it, and it would be that that is down on the bottom left. And in your package today is the small, single-family home section as final plat, which is on the bottom right. It is along Paint Rock Road, and there is restriction that forbids any of the lots that, above the road, cannot have direct access to Paint Rock.
So there are a couple of notes that I had on this one, Sherry.
Okay.
Note six, well, let me go back. Has this, has this tract been zoned?
It's in the three-mile joint jurisdictional, so it has no zoning.
Okay. Is zoning required to develop it?
Right.
Yes?
Yes, you're right.
So, you know, we had this issue with the Country Club tract a couple of months ago, where we had a bunch of folks come in when the, when we had already approved the plats, and the zoning was the last thing, and they were pretty upset. I personally would like to see the zoning and the plating brought together, or the zoning brought first, to avoid those issues that we had in the Country Club subdivision plat. So that was my first comment. The other one is on note six, and it talks about, it's basically, it's talking about the fire life safety requirements and how there may be a requirement down the road when, when water is brought to this site to improve or add hydrants. And I'm just, I'm wondering if you guys have done this in other circumstances. It seems like, I guess my concern is that if we don't address it when it's being developed, and we're relying on homeowners down the road in 15 or 20 years to make improvements for fire life safety purposes, that's where, you know, that's where folks can be upset. Something could be overlooked. You would have to notify the folks when they're buying their house that there could be a cost of some sort down the road. And I just, it seems like if we have a, if we have a fire life safety circumstance that we need to address, can we address it fully when we're plating this and it's being developed? So that we don't have a problem down the road? Or we don't have the fire department going to homeowners saying, it's time to put hydrants in, you're, you're going to pay another $20,000 to us for these new hydrants, even though you've lived in your house for 15 years?
Mr. Streplin, you're correct. We have handled it this way when we're in the joint jurisdictional area, just outside of the city limits. We handled it this way when it was a piece of property that was very close to the lake.
Okay.
It's covered by a rural fire group. They did not know at that point in time what they wanted, and so the only way we could do it is very similar to the wording that I gave you on this one also. And since this isn't in the city limits...
Yes.
We have to go with whatever that rural fire group is that.
And this, correct me if I'm wrong, but this meets the development standards for the ETJ?
Yes, it does.
So they, so I guess the, back to your question about the zoning, we really don't have a way to, if they were proposing to annex and develop smaller lots, in which case they would need the zoning, then we could say, well, no, you got the cart before the horse. You need to annex it, zone it, and then plat it. But if they meet all of the standards for development in the ETJ, we can't really say, you know, we want you to wait and do the zoning first, because there is no zoning to do.
There's no zoning required.
Correct. If they meet the development standards for developing in the county...
Okay.
Is the difference because the other one was in the city limits?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. No, it was in the ETJ.
It was.
Absolutely.
Well, but the difference was they were proposing to develop city-sized lots, and what they had requested was to plat it first with a condition on the plat that the annexation and zoning go through.
Okay.
And so I think that was the difference there, where it was sort of getting the cart before the horse.
They were planning on becoming a part of the city, so that would...
Right.
Yeah.
In this case, they, my understanding is they don't have necessarily any intent to come into the city. Back to your other question, it's sort of a philosophical issue. I've worked in cities where the requirement was you build all the water lines and fire hydrants, because we required it to be built to city standard. If you were served by a water supply corporation that, you know, those lines were too big, they couldn't support a fire hydrant, that city basically made you build two water lines. One for the, you know, two-inch, four-inch, whatever service lines that the water supply corporation could support, and then another set of lines that was up to city standard for whenever the city connected out there. I think we've decided that that's too much to ask. The downside is you are pushing a burden off on those homeowners down the line. If that ever does come into the city and get city water, then collectively, that subdivision will be responsible for running those new lines, putting in fire hydrants.
Is it the subdivision, or would it be the city's burden at that time if we were moving to annex? Because then it falls on the taxpayers.
It depends. That would be part of the service plan negotiated as part of the annexation, so it could, the city could take on that responsibility, or it could be a responsibility of the homeowners. There could be some sort of an assessment that everybody, everybody pays into that, so there's no exact answer. It just depends on when the annexation occurs. And frankly, it depends on what the city's ordinance is and state law say at that time when that happens, because those things often change.
I think, I think I'm going to open it up for public comment. Thank you, Sherry.
My name is Blake with Wildey Engineering here. This is a subdivision that was brought to y'all back in 2015, the exact same thing. And it was approved then, and right now, they're just re-upping it because the time limit faded away, you know, you have three years to build it or whatnot. So, I mean, there's really not anything special going on. They're going to use Miller's View dual for the water system. Just like on the other section, it's going to be, you know, eight-inch water line, fire hydrants. It's going to be built to city specs so that someday it can be taken over by the city, if it's ever annexed. You know, completely auto-city specs, so don't worry about any of that stuff. I mean, that's how they're doing it. So, I mean, you have any specific questions or anything?
No, I was, I was not made aware that you guys were installing hydrants. This note seems to indicate if not.
Right. That's what I was sitting back there, I was like, we only had an open public comment yet, so I'll just sit back here a little bit.
So... That's why I opened public comment. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
All right. Any other questions?
I don't think so. Thank you. Okay, so in light of the comments from Mr. Wildey, do we need to, or, does anyone else that wishes to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Are there any revisions that need to be made to this note in light of the comments from Mr. Wildey?
No, no comments.
All right. I don't know if I have anything else to ask, guys. Anyone wish to make a motion or share their thoughts?
So do we need...
Do we need to do something with note number six? Is that, is note number six accurate?
Well, I think we could possibly revise it. I mean, basically, what it says is, we're not requiring that today, but it may be required someday. If they go ahead and do it, that's fine. It doesn't preclude them from, from running lines and providing fire hydrants. And that last sentence basically says that they, they have to comply with the requirement for fire protection, which allows for onsite, you know, water tanks.
Sure.
But if they're running water lines that can support fire hydrants and putting in the hydrants, then they will have met that condition anyway.
Okay.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So six, zero on both of them. All right, regular agenda. Subdivision plats. Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. RP 2308, Second Replat in Block 4 Carruthers Addition. Request for approval of a second replat... Request for approval of a second replat in Block Four, Carruthers addition, being Track C. Replat of Block Four of Carruthers addition, City of San Angelo, Tom Green County, Texas, according to the plat recorded in plat cabinet E, slide 51 of the plat records, Tom Green County, Texas.
As indicated, this is a replat. It is a commercially zoned property. It is on fronts on Bell Street. The larger Track Two does front on Bell Street. There's Track One, which is the track, which is up in the corner, which is the track that brought this necessity to rezone to the city for action. It is in District Three, I believe, in Fort Concho East neighborhood. I wanted to include the zoning so that you can see that it is all either heavy commercial or general commercial. Immediately across the street, which is Marie, there are single-family residential homes. But the rest of the property, both to the east and to the south, is undeveloped at this time. Staff is making a recommendation, which normally we don't do because we're able to work out the issues, but because this is a piece of property that was allowed to develop in the past, that has the, as you could see, a number of storage units that were on that property. It is... We're really dealing with only two property owners in this case. The applicant has asked for variances on all of the streets that front this property, so it would be on Culberson, it would be on Marie, and it would be on the street to the south. Staff disagrees with the granting the variance on Culberson, but we do agree with granting the variances on the other two streets. And the staff and the applicants, we're evaluating their request for why they want a variance on Marie. I included their information as we were going through, looking at their request and whether or not we would agree with them. So I'd like to go through that very quickly, if I could, because they are asking all three variances for all three streets. In dealing with this, staff, as I indicated, staff is recommending the variance... A denial of the variance requests on Culberson. Culberson will be completely built out, even though the applicant at this time only wants to do a paved... Or the person that the applicant is going to sell to only wants to do a paved parking lot in that corner. It will, we believe, in the future, develop... Something will be built on that. The applicant states that the variance will allow the street to remain in its existing functional state. Staff does disagree with that, because the size of the pavement on that street varies dramatically, and that is the only paved, really, access that the fire department has to those other... To where the residents are developed and for going north-south on Marie and then around the corner, if they were to need to get to those storage units to fight a fire. The second comment, the applicant believes that the conditions are unique to this property and do not apply to other properties. They are requesting, again, that because there are only two property owners on this block, and that it's a small block with streets that are not paved and not used very often, that they should not have to do the remaining pavement and curb and gutter and sidewalk that staff disagrees with. Again, that is the only paved street that gets access back. It's used by everyone that goes back along Culberson. There are residences there where they do walk on... The children do walk on the streets, and it is the access for the fire. Point three is because of the physical surroundings of the property, the applicant believes that it is a hardship to the owner. They believe that they did not have to do the development in the past when the storage units were built, and it's unfair to make only those two owners responsible for the street development that others are going to be using, which is the way that we get streets, obviously, streets paved with curb and gutter and sidewalk, developed all over the city. And item four, the variance will not be in any significant way vary the provisions of the ordinance. And again, staff disagrees with that, because, as I indicated, that is the only way that we do get streets paved to the minimum size with curb and gutter and with sidewalk. And so... And I... Those were the items that I just listed on why staff disagrees. The fire is a main concern, having unobstructed access to that area in case they needed to get there. So again, staff is recommending approval of the plat and approval of the variance for Marie and Brian, but denial of the variance request for Culberson. And we have eight conditions listed. The first one is the tax cert that we always ask for. Second one, fire apparatus access roads shall have an unobstructed width of less than 20 feet, exclusive of shoulders, except for approved security gates in accordance with Section 5038. The fire code officials shall have the authority to require permit modifications to the required access width where they are inadequate for fire or rescue. And the... I believe the fire does not necessarily have a problem with Marie or with Brian, but was concerned about Culberson. Point three, we have to submit plans for approval. Installation of sewer and required sewer connections along Culberson, Marie, and Brian. Point four is prior to plat recordation, prepare and submit the plans for approval for the water installation, again, along all three streets. Point five, prior to plat recordation, submit a revised plat on which is illustrated the dedication of 40 feet along the south side of the right-of-way of Culberson, and the one-half of the required increment to increase the total right-of-way to the minimum, for a local road being 40 feet. Point six, prior to plat recordation, prepare and submit plans for required improvements to Culberson by half the additional increment necessary for the dedication. And we... In this case, it was added either that or the construction of the four-foot sidewalk. It would be 10 foot short. Point seven, in talking with the city engineer, he wanted particularly to... For them to prepare and submit plans for required improvements to South Marie from Culberson Street to Bryan Street by half the additional increment necessary. Again, that is the only access road. Right now, it dwindles to almost a trail, so if the fire had to get down there, they could not. And point eight, prior to plat recordation, prepare and submit plans for required improvements to Bryan Street from South Marie to South Bell. Though we have in the past allowed that development, the city has allowed the development of the storage units, and I believe in reading the past minutes, the thought was they could access everything off of Bell, but it negates any improved street access to any other part along either Bryan or Marie if we don't require what the code actually states. And so, again, staff is recommending approval with the ground of the variances for Marie and Bryan, but denial on Culberson.
Okay. I've got a couple of questions. So, in the notes, you talk about improvements to Bryan, Marie, and Culberson. And the staff is in support of granting variances for Bryan and Marie?
We are. We understand that that is a... Number one, we've allowed development in the past. Number two, that would be a significant impact on the two property owners from a financial standpoint. And after discussion among all of the department heads at our meetings and with our department, we felt that Culberson is the most important street. We know, given the slow development on the ownership by the city of one of the pieces of property, that probably the variances were warranted on Marie and on Bryan.
Okay. There's been a lot of discussion about road width and paving. But there's also the extension of the utilities as well. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, where are the utilities now, and where do they have to go to?
If I could, I'd like to bring Kevin up and let him address that.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Kevin Vade, city engineer. The utilities, as I recall, extend along Bell Street for the water...
Yes, sir.
...and sewer.
Okay.
At this time. There is a water line going down Culberson, which I believe intersects Marie and goes south to a certain part, short distance. That's where they exist currently. The extension, it's kind of a... To meet the letter of the ordinances, all of the water and sewer would need to be extended entirely around this plat lot...
Right.
...being on Bryan, Marie, and Culberson. In this case, supporting, if you will, variances on Bryan and Marie, that leaves in the extension of sewer line along Culberson to... Along the lot, along the frontage of that one lot.
Okay.
Technically, you might also consider that would require coming down Marie because of that frontage, but that's where they exist now.
Okay, so there's a water line on Culberson, no sewer line, and there's no water or sewer on Bryan or Marie?
There's some water on the northern portion of Marie.
Okay.
Yeah, so a short branch on that connection.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have questions?
Yeah, it looks like in the overhead picture in the packet that the southern... The lot to the south, or the tract, I guess, to the south or block, whatever you call that, on Marie, is paved, is that right?
From... Basically, from Bryan to Roosevelt, on the east side of that lot, below the subject. Is that... Is it not paved? Okay.
I'm sorry, you mean to the south of this project?
Correct.
South of Bryan?
Yes.
It does appear to be paved on the area a lot of the... Any... Erica maybe has more information, but...
No, I'm talking about Marie.
Marie, south of Bryan, does look... Appear to be paved.
Okay, good. We're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward. State your name and address or single member district, please.
Erica Wilde, Wilde Engineering. Come on, y'all, I knew this was mine. I never bring y'all an easy, simple one. Just a little background, kind of restating. There's one owner that owns C2 and C1. Track A is currently parking their things on the grass...
On C1?
...in C1.
Okay.
So the owner went to the guy and was like, "You can buy this from me if you're going to park here." "Okay, great." Then they got to do a replat. And it's not... The applicant isn't necessarily concerned much about the extending Culberson and the sewer. It's the timing, because he's not going to be doing it. The other guy is. But the other guy can't do it until he buys this property from him and owns it. So it's kind of a timing, and that's why we had requested a deferral on those to a building permit or a grading, a parking lot permit, because this guy won't have anything to do with it. He's just trying to sell it. So, that's kind of the background. We appreciate staff and working with us through all this, but that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Thank you, Erica.
Any questions?
Anyone have questions for Erica? Makes sense, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case?
Oh, wait, I have one more thing. Sorry, I forgot. I guess there was a comment on the right-of-way on Culberson Street, but in our DRC meetings, John, I don't know if you remember this, the owners... We have already... We were told we had already been dedicated on our side, but that the other side was the ones... Were the ones who had to dedicate their right-of-way.
I don't remember that, but I don't necessarily disagree. If this property was platted, and I believe the property of the north is not platted...
Right.
So, it's very likely that that was the case, not knowing for sure. I'm not... Not sure how to proceed without being able to answer that question.
Can... Is that something we can, I don't know, work out or go back and...
Right-of-way?
42-foot right-of-way?
For Culberson?
Mm-hmm.
It shows to be 42 feet on that plat.
I guess the question is, right now, we don't have anything that would show that. I don't know if you have...
No, I'm just going off of what was said in the meeting, so...
Yeah. I think maybe... Question for Brandon, but we could maybe revise that condition to say, to add a note of...
If required.
If it can be shown that this property already dedicated their share of the right-of-way in the previous plat, then that condition can be resolved. Does that make sense?
Which note are we on?
I think it was number five.
Note five, it looks like, is Culberson. So we're going to add, if it can be shown, if applicant can provide evidence that right-of-way was previously dedicated, then condition is met. was previously dedicated, then condition is met.
Does that work for you?
That'll work for me, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. All right. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right. I'm going to close public comment. You know, cases like this are tough, because I think about the circumstances that we've dealt with up in Lakeview in trying to build some infill lots and not having utilities extended and folks that don't want to extend roads to vacant land when there's vacant land that's approximate to them that will inevitably be developed. And I'm personally kind of a stickler for making sure that we get roads and utilities extended when improvements are going in. I think the staff has been more than fair in granting variances or supporting variances for Bryan and Marie. But I do think that it makes sense to extend Culberson, because ultimately, if there's property to the east that's going to develop, it wouldn't be fair to them to carry the burden of making the improvements along this stretch of the roadway. So, anyone else want to share thoughts or make a motion?
I think I understand the... And, I mean, Erica, if I'm incorrect about this, but I think I understand the issue's not necessarily improving the roads, it's the timing of it and the fact that the owner... It needs to be replatted in order for the owner to sell the property. Is that right? And then...
I'm going to open up public comment for Erica. That's all right.
Didn't think y'all could hear me. But, yeah, that's correct. I listed these conditions out to the applicant, also let him know how the city was willing to help him out on approving some of the variances. This one in the case, you know, I told him it's going to probably have to be done. But, yeah, so it's the timing of when it goes in. Can we go ahead and file the plat? And then be held... They be held to a permit of any kind on track C1 to when they put the improvements in.
So, the two ways we can do that... The typical way is through a financial guarantee. So, the applicant basically guarantees it through a bond or a letter of credit or something. The second way that we use more sparingly is just a development agreement, basically a written agreement where they agree to do it at some point in the future. I think that's an option in this case.
I think the written agreement would be a good one for this case, just so that he's not... The client trying to replat isn't having to put up the final financial guarantee, I guess, but the other guy is.
The tricky part with that is it's the applicant... It's the subdivider that is obligated to do it, and so that the development agreement would be with the subdivider. So, in some sense, it would be incumbent upon him to...
To make sure that the other guy does...
Is the development agreement with the individual, or does it run with the tract?
Yeah. Well, both. We'll have a provision in there that says it runs with the land, but it's also... I mean, the party will be the subdivider.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we can...
Oh, yeah, we can, and we do, but it... If they want to sign it, then they'll just need to get city approval for that.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's... That works for us in our benefit, so...
Thank you, Erica. All right. I'm going to close public comment and take a motion or thoughts.
I think I'd move to approve with the change to the conditions to allow for a development agreement to defer the required improvements to the roads until a permit is necessary.
To Culberson only? We have variances that we would grant for the other roads as well, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then what about note five?
Yeah. And then, yeah, also with the condition that if the applicant's able to provide evidence that the right-of-way was previously dedicated on the tract, that the condition is removed.
A second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve granting variances on Marie and Bryan and deferring the requirements for improvements on Culberson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? FP 2308, Osavito subdivision, request for a final plat of Osavito subdivision being 21.517 acres of land out of the V. Muller survey, number 176, abstract number 1648, described and recorded in instrument number 201715723, Official Public Records of Tom Green County, Texas.
You will recognize that this is the one that you tabled until this meeting. This is the single lot, the 21-acre lot that's along Foster Road. There is a wide easement on there, which will have the city utility expansion in it. The area is R and E. Again, it's located along 5250 Foster Road. It's in District One, Country Club neighborhood. In looking at this piece of property and with the city working with the applicant, I think everyone is in agreement now that the variance will be granted for just the road width along Foster Road. And then, everything else, we will not... Are not going to require at this time, because it is such a large piece of property. It will be required as that develops. And so, with that, we're recommending approval.
What was requested for Foster Road and what has been granted in terms of...
Originally, what was requested was an expansion on the width and paving width of Foster But at this time, we feel that there's only one home going in on that 21 acres. And so, not requiring the widening of Foster Road and the increased pavement makes sense for just one home, but it will be required when there is future development.
If there's future development, they're going to plat again?
Yes.
Which is why you're...
Yes.
Granting the variance. Okay. All right. Anyone have questions for the staff? I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this, please come forward. State your name and address, single member district. I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? FP 2312, Olkers subdivision, Block 1, Section 1, request for approval of final plat of Olker subdivision, Block 1, Section 1, being .17 acres out of H. Olker's survey, number 165, abstract 1757, described and recorded in instrument number 202216788.
Okay. Zach Rainbow, Planning and Development Services. As you mentioned, this is a final plat, 2306 of the Olker subdivision, Section 1. It's zoned RS1. This is a plat for a single-family home site. Staff is recommending approval. Based on the conversations we've had and conversations I had on Friday, the applicant has addressed number two. Number three is an infill question issue with the sidewalk requirement that we've had discussions on, as well as number four. So, staff is recommending approval with three conditions, one of which is standard tax certificate, label and dimensions of all rights and ways shown. And I'll just show you there. McCann Street just doesn't have one mentioned, so it's just a notational mark. And then, the big one, the reason it's on the regular agenda, is a fire hydrant is required per the Fire Department. Their typical standard for residential is usually around 600 feet, and this one exceeds past that. I believe there's someone here with the Fire Department to speak to that. But with that, staff is recommending approval, again with three conditions down from the six mentioned here. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, Zach, just to clarify, we've got... The staff reports that we have have five notes or five comments and a note.
Yes.
So, items one, two, five, and the hydrant. We're going to strike three and four. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And number two, where there's a mention of missing a notational mark about a lot to the south.
Yes.
I did confirm that. Jack did verify that that piece, RGIS, is incorrect, so that note has been addressed as well.
So, note two is satisfied?
Correct. Yes, sir.
So, we have one, five, and the hydrant.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Zach. I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Good morning, Russell with SKG. Zach, thanks for clarifying on those comments. The one remaining one is kind of on the fire hydrant. We would ask to... If we could defer that, if you will, for when the home is placed on the lot. We're right on the cusp, depending on exactly where that house sits on that lot. There's a fire hydrant that's right at that 600-feet mark from providing the coverage. So, and when we have a standard note, I don't know if it's on this one, it's cut off about... That talks about the fire hydrant's coverage, if you will. If it's... If it's not on there, we can make sure it's on there, but we would like to kind of defer the fire hydrant to the building permit phase, if you will, so that they can... The developer on this can get the site plan drawn up. We do the measurements and know exactly where the fire hydrant is and if a new one is going to be required or not. Address it is kind of tied to the home construction.
I think the reason that's a note is that's really outside your purview. It's really up at the Fire Marshal's office, and so I think it's really just working with them. So, in terms of this process, we don't really care. We're just passing on a note from the Fire Marshal that a fire hydrant may be required.
Okay.
If there's a lawful accident at two of those meetings... We've had the same issue with fire hydrants, and we did defer them until the build stage, just, you know, based on where the placement was.
Yeah. I think Mr. James is right. As a note, it's not one of those that we have to...
It's not a condition.
Not a condition, it's a note. And so, those are kind of looked at differently. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. Anyone else wish to speak on this case?
Billy Clemens, Fire Marshal. And I agree. I'm not opposed to deferding it to that point, but again, it is a note, and we do require those fire hydrants to be within the 600 feet of the building. So, once they do a measurement, it is road distance and not straight from the hydrant to the house, so it has to follow the path of the fire truck.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, when they do measure that, it kind of gets mixed up sometimes, because they do, like, the bird's-eye view.
Straight-line shot.
Straight-line from the hydrant to the house, and that's not how it's supposed to be. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
So, since the hydrant's a note, we don't need to defer it? Am I understanding correctly?
I think that's correct.
Okay.
It's not a condition.
And Russell, you're fine with that? Okay. All right. I'll make a motion to approve as presented with striking items two, three, and four as conditions.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve, striking note or conditions two, three, and four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-zero. No, it's no problem. We're going to take a short break for a couple of minutes here, please. In session, it's 10:11. We're on rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments. The city council has final authority for approval of rezonings and amendments to the comprehensive plan. The 1K CP 2301 and Z 2303, 4112 Coliseum Drive. Request for approval of a comprehensive plan amendment to change from neighborhood to commercial and approve rezoning from single-family RS1 zoning to general commercial zoning being .951 acres located at 4112 Coliseum Drive.
Sherri Bailey again. This piece of property is just about two blocks south of the Coliseum. It's along Coliseum Drive. That entire area has experienced a lot of development over the years since the Coliseum was built. It has become much more commercial. When I went out there to take my pictures and to look at and post the sign or and visit with the people in the area, you could see that that entire block, except for two houses that are both rental houses on that block, and then the block between... Let me see if... This is the area that we're talking about, and everything that goes north up to the Coliseum is either a building that is used by the Coliseum or used by people who come to the Coliseum and put their commercial products in the area, or it's gently over the past number of years become an auto repair area, an area for different kinds of commercial services. So, having it zoned, single-family residential, and having the comprehensive plan amendment as neighborhood no longer makes sense for this area. But since this applicant was the one that spurred the changes, and they're wanting to do that because of some changes to their site that they want to do, in the past, starting with about 1968, they have been in this same site. It has been considered... They used to go to the ZBA whenever they wanted to do something or build something more on the site. They would go there to... As a non-conforming use. But moving to a commercial use in that area makes more sense, and they agreed with that when they came in this last time. The... What they are is they do the monuments, headstones, different kinds of granite monuments. The monuments are stored outside, so they're all on the piece of property in front of the office. The building in the back is where they work on the monuments, where they put... Whatever you do to a monument, cut it down, polish it, everything else that is done. It's major, large equipment. There are a lot of trucks that are in the area, and so, heavy commercial only made sense for them. Therefore, it would allow them to do what they wanted to do and to continue doing it in the future. What staff is proposing to do, not at this meeting, but hopefully next month, is to come in and change just the comprehensive plan in for that entire area to a more commercial use. As you can see, the dot represents where this applicant's business is, but that entire area over there was zoned commercial a number of years back to the left. area over there was zoned commercial a number of years back to the left, and we'd like to do some comprehensive plan changes to move it in that direction. It just makes sense, it's impacted. The homes, most people either are renting their homes or businesses have come in and bought it and are using it as offices. So staff is supportive of the zone change and the comprehensive plan in this case. We did send out notifications to the surrounding property owners. I talked to the one property owner who got the notice sent in, didn't put any comments down. When I visited with them, they said, oh, no, I support that. That wasn't what I thought was happening. And I told them that we would be hopefully bringing for comprehensive plan amendment for the future, and that would impact their property. It would open it up, and so they were supportive of that. I wasn't able to get the other person. But again, staff is recommending approval of both the comprehensive plan and the zone change. And that'll give you an idea of the material that's outside and the large building where they do most of their work and large trucks that bring it in. So, are there any questions?
Do you have questions for the staff? Thank you, Sherry. I'll open it up for public comment.
Erica Willey, again. I second whatever she said. They've been around for years and years. They're doing a little minor addition to a building, and so it says they have to do a zone change, so that's what they're doing. So I just asked that y'all approve as presented.
Thank you, Erica.
Any questions for me?
I don't think so.
All right. Thank you.
What else? All right. Anyone else wish to speak?
So by moving that to heavy commercial.
I'm going to close public comment. Sorry, no. Go ahead, Trinidad.
Yeah, by changing that to heavy commercial, that whole area, what's that going to do to the aesthetics? I mean, right now, it's somewhat controlled, and I'm familiar with that monument area, but now I'm starting to wonder if, you know, as you're going to the Coliseum and they're doing that major remodel to the Coliseum, are we going to have everything that's allowed under heavy commercial at the entry to the Coliseum?
Do you mind going back a couple of slides to that aerial photo that kind of shows the Chadburn Street zoning and, right there, that's perfect.
And I see that to the left of that, it's not on the entryway, but that's my only concern right now is, that is, I mean, we're spending a lot of dollars on that Coliseum, and it's controlled to some degree, but if you change that to heavy commercial, there's no way of controlling it.
I kind of share the same concern that you have, Trinidad. I'm not, I'm not trying to, the business that's there is acceptable in my mind, but heavy commercial for this lot, I have a couple of concerns. One is Trinidad's that, you know, it's the, it's one of the primary gateways into our Coliseum. I drove by that site on Saturday going up to the rodeo. And the greater concern I have is that there's a lot of single-family residential that's east of this. And heavy commercial allows for uses that could be harmful to those homes that are pretty proximal. General commercial might work okay in that area if it was commercially developed, but heavy commercial with, you know, and not the current use that's there, but uses that are allowed in heavy commercial zoning. So if this business were to move and someone else came in and it's zoned heavy commercial and they're working with, you know, chemicals that could be harmful if they caught fire and were, you know, we had a smoke cloud going over the homes that were just east of it, it's concerning to me, especially in light of what I've seen on the news in the last couple of months with chemical fires. So, general commercial, heavy commercial, which is what Chadburn Street is zoned, is no longer a proper zoning designation. It's not an option anymore.
And I also agree with that, Travis, because there's still a lot of school kids going down that road.
Yeah.
We still have, you know, I'm not sure, is Lakeview Stadium still alive and well? I mean, there's quite a bit of, there's quite a bit of traffic that's family oriented, and I'm thinking of Cristoville Road.
Yes.
And what's become of Cristoville Road and the oil and everything else that's there. So, I hope there's a different way of protecting the monument.
Yeah. It's, as it stands, and I guess I'd like the staff's input on this, but what they've got is a legal non-conforming use today. And I'm not trying to remove that, and if they need to make improvements, I'd like to find a way to allow them to continue to operate their business as it is. I'm just, I think the long-term, the long-term plan for that area, maybe heavy commercial's not a fit. Yes, ma'am?
And we've gone back and forth on this. That's why we, one of the reasons why we were only looking to do a comprehensive plan amendment for the rest of the area, rather than changing the zoning at this time to give us more time to take a look at what transitional commercial zoning would make sense in that area.
Okay.
But in talking with John just a minute ago, we maybe have a recommendation that would address your concerns, I think.
Okay.
If you decided to recommend going PD with a heavy commercial as the underlay for this zoning, which would be aimed just at this particular use and applicant, and then when they left, we could either rezone it at that time to match the area or work with whoever was going to come in.
Okay.
So I'm thinking the underlying, the underlying zoning would be like neighborhood commercial or general commercial, but with this particular use as an additional allowed use. Is that...
Is that even we have to resubmit?
Erica, please come up. Please come up. I'm going to open public comment for Erica. We're not trying to make this any more difficult for you guys.
I know, I know. I get what y'all are saying. But if we change it to PD, do we have to resubmit and wait another month?
No, I think if you all have the ability to recommend what's requested or something less than that.
Okay.
And I think our opinion is that a plan development based on, say, neighborhood or general commercial.
Would be less.
With this just one additional use would be definitely less. So you could, I think, recommend that today, and then it could move on to council.
And I'm good with that. Whatever they can, whatever we can do, I agree with y'all on that area. It's kind of a weird area.
It is. And I don't, I...
And that place is kind of a monument to the area.
I know, it is.
I've asked it a lot.
It's been there for 60 years. It's like crazy. So we would be fine as long as they could move forward, and the addition they're making is like 13-foot wide addition, so. But I know y'all are looking at...
John, I have a, I do have a question. If, if we don't touch the zoning at all today, can they make the improvements that they've, they're trying to make to the lot?
No, again, because it's non-conforming, you're not allowed to expand a non-conforming use, which includes expanding the building.
Okay.
We do have a separate process that goes to the zoning board of adjustment called expansion of a non-conforming use. That's a request that somebody can ask for, so that, that would be another option. It would delay them, and it also, I mean, there's no guarantee the board approves it.
Yeah, no, I understand. And I'm not trying to delay this process. I'm just trying to be as fair and consistent in, I mean, a PD is obviously a good solution for this site, but I don't, I don't think a PD for this entire area would make sense.
No, I think just site-wise, I think it makes sense for this until the city's able to, again, revisit the neighborhood and decide what they feel is best, but to not slow down the process of what they're trying to do, I think the PD with the underlay of the heavy commercial on this specific one's fine.
Okay, so, yes, John?
I might take a pause on that. I believe our ordinance has a minimum size for a plan development of one acre, and this property is, is less than an acre.
Oh, no.
Yes, you're right. So can we, if, if this specific property was rezoned to the heavy commercial?
.65 acres.
Can we have it site-specific to, or owner-specific, that if these people ever sold, then the heavy commercial designation goes away?
No, with straight zoning, you're basically zoning it to what that zone allows, can't be conditioned. I mean, that's the reason we have things like plan developments and conditional uses is for those unique circumstances, but if you zone it heavy commercial...
Okay. Is there, is, would, would this be a permitted use in general commercial?
No.
Is it because they're grinding stuff or because of the trucks?
It's mostly because of the outdoor storage.
Okay. So is heavy commercial the only zoning district that allows the use that they've...
That, and manufacturing, yes.
And manufacturing.
Right.
Well, that's more intense, so that won't work.
And we tried to make it fit in the artisan category, but it just doesn't.
I was going to say, is that storage or display?
Yeah.
So, John, are the only two options we've got to rezone this heavy commercial or allow
it to remain non-conforming and go to the ZBA?
I think so.
So if the ZBA declines them on the non-conforming, can they come back and re-request the heavy commercial?
Well, I suppose if, if you were interested in waiting to see what the ZBA did.
Yeah.
You could table this request, let that go to ZBA, but then that, obviously that delays...
Erica, I'm, we're trying to find a solution for you guys, and I think, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not speaking for the whole board, but personally, I think heavy commercial for this site is probably not a fit.
Brandon, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we say zoning this to PD with this particular use, and we could narrowly define this use as the underlying use that would be allowed there? So if that went away, it would still be the PD and things that could happen under the PD.
The problem is the PD is limited to, has to be an acre or more.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
I would add, I guess, given the size of this property, the likelihood of it being used for some of the more obnoxious heavy commercial uses.
Yeah.
Is unlikely.
It's unlikely, but it's still an inconsistent zoning within this area.
Sure.
I'm, I don't know, I don't know what our, it doesn't sound like we have a lot of great options.
John, if we come back next month with the comprehensive plan amendment that changes the comprehensive plan for that area, that's going to define what could go into that area.
But what I'm hearing from the commissioners is that they're not supportive of a change that would allow that heavy commercial type uses in the area. Another alternative might be, we mentioned that we wanted to come back looking at the surrounding area. We could look at the uses surrounding this and possibly bring back a larger area.
Yeah.
That would be big enough to do a plan development.
Okay.
That could rezone. Again, that delays us a month, but we could do basically what we talked about a minute ago.
Yeah.
Plan development with CG perhaps with this additional use, but for a larger area, incorporating some of those other non-conforming uses that are around this property.
Okay. So based on those comments, I...
Yeah, but that really wouldn't, we could move forward and then just incorporate that PD and the larger PD.
They, they aren't allowed to rezone to a PD smaller than an acre today.
Surrounding.
That's, yeah, but even...
But during the delay period, could, she could still apply for the variance, and then, you know, for the, going to the other boards. So we could, she could do that for now, because either way, I mean, by the time we look at it, make that determination, the timing may be the same.
Try votes? Is that what you're saying? For her, try votes?
Yes.
Go to ZBA and...
Yeah. If we tabled this one or delayed this one until we looked at it.
Yeah.
I think that entry, you know, I lived up in the Dallas area, and I just remember that, that one area where, you know, the Cotton Bowl is played and what it became because of the, just the zoning. So I think that would be beautiful if we had restaurants, if we had, you know, that's going to be a ripe area.
Yeah, it would be.
But that's my, again, that's just my two cents worth there.
I hate it, but that's, sounds like the best bet for the owners.
Yes, sir.
So Sherry's thought is we could, you could recommend approval of the heavy commercial today, that would go on to city council, but we could bring back next month, just what we talked about, looking at a larger area, that would then basically change the zoning away from heavy commercial just in a month or two. And so basically, assuming it works for you all and the council agrees, then it would only be zoned heavy commercial for like a month, but it doesn't delay the applicant.
Okay, wait, 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 wait. So if, if that's the case, the applicant could proceed with building their 13 feet or whatever it was, but then when it gets rezoned, are they going to get in trouble? I mean, like I...
No, no. I mean, number one, once they, they build it legally under the zoning. They would build it legally under the zoning at that time, which would be heavy commercial. But then they would bring back a staff-initiated case to rezone it away from heavy commercial to something else, probably a plan development, but that incorporates those existing non-conforming uses. It's sort of convoluted, but it, it's, it's a way to do it that doesn't delay them.
It is. And I'm, I'm thinking into the future here, and I don't think that, I mean, that, that fixes them today, but in five or 10 years, if they've got to do something else, like they've stated, they've had to go through this process every time, it doesn't solve their, their problem necessarily.
Well, no...
We fix it today, but we don't fix it for five or 10 years from now.
But I'm not, I'm not suggesting we rezone it back out of something, making them non-conforming again. We bring back the plan, plan development that would allow that specific use, so it would become conforming.
It would just be specific.
Right. It would be like, say, general commercial with the additional allowed use of a monument sales.
Got it. Okay.
So they would be conforming, you know, forever.
So does it have to stay heavy commercial through the entire build process to make sure they're conforming, or, I mean, as long as they have their build permit?
We would write the plan development in a way that it would be conforming under that as well. So, yeah, let's say we get that other zoning done before they're ready to move forward. They would, it would work either way.
Okay. I just wouldn't want them to get halfway through and then somehow not be able to...
What does that do to the other... Want to make a motion on this?
Yeah. What does that do to the other areas? The other, the other businesses that are there, if we do the entire area, could they then apply for heavy commercial during this window of opportunity?
Just for this site?
Is it just for this site, or is it, are we approving the entire area?
No, today, you're only, the only thing before you is this one particular site.
Okay, so, we're not opening a window for someone else to come and do this?
No, we're not.
I think if anybody else wanted to apply and watch this meeting, they would probably... I think if anybody else wanted to apply and watch this meeting, they would probably be discouraged.
Okay, so...
Do they have to accept the zone change?
Who's that?
The owner. If we zoned it heavy commercial and you come back in a couple of months and you want to change it to PD or general commercial or something else, do they have to accept the zoning change?
No, staff can initiate a zoning change on any property. Now, if enough of the owners object, then it can trigger a supermajority and that sort of thing. But if they're okay with it, yeah, they...
Okay.
Okay, so, and I apologize, as we've gone round and round on this one. So the plan that you had just mentioned about zoning it to heavy commercial temporarily so they are able to proceed and then coming back, how exactly do we word that to make a motion?
Well, your motion would be simply to approve the heavy commercial. You could add directing staff to bring back a planned development as discussed.
In a period of time?
You could, again, it's really not part of the motion. It's just direction to staff, so...
Okay, and does that have to have a time period on it, John?
It doesn't. I mean, it would, you're basically trusting us that we'll bring it back in a reasonable timeframe.
Okay, all right, I'm going to take a shot at this, so hopefully I'm not wrong. But I'm going to make a motion to approve as presented with the direction of staff to bring it back with the PD for that neighborhood.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented with an additional note to the staff to look at rezoning the entire area. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Six, zero. Conditional uses. The planning commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to the city council. CU 2305, 1411 South Tyler. Request for approval of a conditional use to allow short-term rental in the single-family residential zoning district located at 1411 South Tyler Street.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. This is the first of three conditional uses that we have for short-term rental. We received this application. You can see that the house front on that is, it's in a nice area, it's pleasant area. There is some notice around, in talking with the neighbors when I was out there, they were asking about what was the intent, what was going to happen. And we went through the short-term rental and I did visit with them about what their alternatives were. In talking to the applicant, she is aware that she has to pave the parking right now. There isn't a paved approach, but the parking itself is not paved. And so she will be doing that and going through the rest of our requirements for the inspection and the change of occupancy. As I said, we did send out notices to the surrounding property owners. I received one that was opposed. But everyone that I talked to when I was out seemed okay with what was proposed and what was going to happen, so staff is recommending approval. We went through all of the requirements. They are aware it is an identified community need, particularly in the Santa Rita area. In the neighborhood, there is no other short-term rental within the 500 feet, so it met that requirement. So the conditions on this application is to pave and maintain all off-street parking on the premises, to obtain a certificate of occupancy from permits inspection division, excuse me, and obtain and comply with the annual fire inspector from the fire marshal's office. The applicant is aware that they will have to come back for renewal in a year. And then after that, it'll be every two years. Are there any questions?
Questions? Thank you, Sherri. I'm going to open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please state your name and address or single-member district.
I guess I'll have to. Didn't want to. I'm against it.
Okay.
I'm against it.
Yes, ma'am.
Definitely. And I can give you lots of reasons. I own a home in San Antonio, a second home, okay. And it's just a new way to make money on a rental. And a small investor, every realtor in Texas is saying, you know, it's a good investment, you can make short-term money real quick. So what I wanted to know was, what do they mean by short-term, you know?
Yeah, so I'm going to, I want to help clarify this.
Pardon?
A short-term rental is a rental less than 30 days.
Right.
So if they had a rental for more than 30 days, they wouldn't be required to come before us. But that would be allowed.
Right.
They also wouldn't have the building inspection and fire marshal inspections and the annual review after the first year. They wouldn't pay hotel occupancy tax.
It's a rental for just three days, five or four days?
Yes, ma'am.
It's an Airbnb.
Less than 30 days.
It's an Airbnb that they're pressing.
Yes, ma'am. It could be a day, it could be two weeks, it could be...
It's the beginning of a neighborhood...
Anything less than 30 days.
No, I'm against it.
Okay.
And for one reason, in San Antonio, within six months, we have eight Airbnbs in one block. And it's not, you know, a historical block, it's not anything that's conducive for tourists or anything, it's just strictly that, and now realtors in San Antonio have gone around and proposed a good investment for you is to buy this house. And they're buying it strictly for putting into an Airbnb.
Yes, ma'am.
Not, and...
That couldn't happen here?
The deterioration of the neighborhood, and what happens is, okay, you have no school, you have no one in the house, no occupants in the house as a rule, but maybe two days a week. So the house is vacant the rest of that week. And there's no way that we're going to be able to support San Angelo and Airbnb in these little areas like that, no. And our school system, you know, what do you do with that? We don't have schools, huh?
The Airbnb would still be responsible for paying their city taxes?
But for eight of them in San Antonio area, within six months, we've got that. So I'm against it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this? All right, I'm going to close public comment. And we've, I was here for the long, drawn-out discussion over approving short-term rentals. And there's a provision, is it 500 feet? Can't have another one within 500 feet. So we couldn't have the circumstance that you were describing. So I think we've done a pretty good job with the provisions that we've got in here for short-term rentals. I know that not everyone in our community supports them. But I think that they're a much better option, especially in neighborhoods like Santa Rita, than long-term rentals, because the owners have to maintain them better. They're not going to be able to rent the unit unless they furnish it and make it nice.
Yeah, the curb appeal, everything is maintained versus just a long-term renter and they're not caring about the property as much. I agree.
And not having to make regular inspections to make sure that everything's well kept. Okay, anyone wish to make a motion on this one?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Six, zero. The next one is CU 2307, 119 North Malone Street. Request for approval of a conditional use to allow short-term rental in the multifamily residential district located at 119 North Malone Street.
This is also, as you indicated, a short-term rental request. It is in the RM1 zoning, which is unusual. We don't usually get them in the R1 zoning, R1M zoning. It's in District 3, Mr. Thomas's district in Fort Concho East. This is a picture of the home and the street. We sent out 18 notices. We received zero in favor and zero opposed. The applicant is aware of all of the restrictions and requirements and has agreed to meet all of those requirements and understands that they will have to return in a year. And with that, staff is recommending that it be approved with the same conditions.
Okay, it has RM1 zoning, is it a single-family home?
It's an existing single-family home and will be rented as that way, with all of the restrictions on that.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this one, please come forward. All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Six, zero. All right, CU 2308, 1501 Shafter Street. Request for approval of conditional use to allow short-term rental in the multifamily residential RM1 zoning district located at 1501 Shafter. Is that correct?
That is correct.
RM1.
RS1, I'm sorry. Does it, I apologize. It is RS1 in District 5, yeah. Yeah, not...
That's better.
Much better.
Thank you, okay, go ahead.
Santa Rita would not like that. It is a request for a short-term rental, RS1 zoning, District 5, and the Santa Rita neighborhood. This is a picture of the home. Again, I went out to, when I went out to take pictures, I talked to the surrounding property owners, a couple of them, who did not have a problem with the request. We sent out 22 notices. We had zero in favor, we had one opposed. And it's kind of kitty-corner across. And I tried to talk to that neighbor. When we received the notices, but I was not able to reach her. And there was nothing written on the mail-in that she sent. All of the same rationale applies in this area in particular. We don't have a lot of short-term rentals. The nearest one that I could measure was about 1,000 feet away.
Okay.
So those are the same three conditions, and we are recommending approval.
All right, anyone have questions for the staff? I'm going to open it up for public comment. I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion.
Make a motion to approve as presented with the change on the thing to RS1, not RM1.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Six, zero. Public comment, issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address comments to the dais, and begin by stating their name and address or single-member district. I'm going to open up public comment. Anyone wish to speak? I'm going to close public comment. Directors report.
Just a couple of things you may have noticed. We're still short-staffed by one position. We do have some interviews coming up, so hopefully be back to full staff in the planning division. Couple of other items that you may have heard about. Actually, one of them came to you all for discussion, the Parkland Dedication Ordinance. That also went to our Development Task Force. We're currently researching and drafting a sample, or not a sample, but a draft ordinance. That should be coming to you all in the next couple of months.
Okay.
And like we normally do with ordinances like that, we'll try to get them to you a few weeks ahead of the meeting rather than just the week before, since it'll be, this one's not like some of our ordinances. It'll probably only be three or four pages. So it won't be too much to look at, but we will give you some extra time on that one. Similarly, the council a few meetings ago asked us to put together a sign ordinance committee to review some elements of our sign ordinance. We were already working on that based on some recent court cases that basically required some changes in our ordinance. But council wanted to open that up and look at a few more items. So that won't be coming to you all for a while. It does come to you before it goes to city council. But we do have a committee that will be starting to look at that over the next month or two. They'll start meeting and then a few months of that. We'll see, they're only probably going to meet two or three times, but it'll be over a period of a couple of months. So hopefully, the results of that will be some direction. And then we'll have to go back and actually write some ordinance changes. But, so it may be six months or eight months before you all see anything.
Okay.
John, can you, just a quick update on Cox? Whatever happened to the Cox Road abandonment? I lost track of it.
Well, my recollection is council approved it.
They approved the right-of-way, or the road abandonment, I believe. They did.
At this point, that development has not moved forward. I know that, it hasn't gone away, but it's, there's really nothing, nothing has moved, progressed at this point. But we expect it to, yeah.
It is a big step. Anyone else have questions for John?
I know I say this every time I should run this up and the answer is always the same, but I still feel that the mailers need more information so people understand what a short-term rental is. You know, whether it's, you know, breaking down the fact that, you know, the applicant has to keep, or reapply within a certain period of time, the police ordinances, all of those things. I think that today's short-term rentals went very quickly, but we've been here for 30-plus minutes on other ones, just trying to get through it. I just feel like there needs to be more public information provided in those flyers. Not everyone goes to the city website to find that information, so that's my opinion.
Okay, we'll definitely look at that.
And just to add to that, I know we've talked in the past about short-term rentals that aren't registered. And I know you're short-staffed right now, but have you guys had any...
Yes, in fact, the finance department is working with a company that does audits of that. And they're looking at it from people who aren't paying hotel tax.
Yeah, exactly.
That's their approach, but they're coordinating with us. So once they're ready to move forward and let people know, hey, you're operating this and you should be paying these taxes, we'll also include the note that you're not registered with the city and need to do so, so...
Okay.
Our hope is, we've mentioned this before, that we're going to look at some changes to the ordinance to streamline some of it, perhaps make some things administrative, particularly renewals if there are no complaints. So we hope to be bringing that soon as well.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll have that before we get this influx of short-term rentals that are applying. Just a note to be thinking about, we don't know that there are any in this situation, but we've anticipated what happens if there are, say, two operating within 500 feet of each other.
Yep.
You all may be forced to make the decision. You know, typically, it's the first one who comes to apply. But let's say you get two in the same month that are both within that distance. You may be asked to make a decision of which one gets approved, since you can't approve both.
Okay.
Again, we don't know that there are any in that circumstance, but that could happen.
Has downtown been addressed in the short-term rentals with the 500-foot?
It is not. You may recall, we took that to you all, in fact, it was the joint meeting you all had with city council. And there were some issues with that. We have not brought that back. That's kind of on our to-do list. It gets hung up in that same court case that basically said, we're either going to have to send notice to every property, either in the downtown or perhaps the entire city, or it will have to be addressed at a city council joint meeting with the planning commission. So we're looking at, there may be some other things that will require such a joint meeting. And so maybe having two or three items so that we... And we're looking at possibly doing that maybe once or twice a year, just having a regularly scheduled joint meeting to address those kinds of issues that would require that kind of situation.
Okay.
Having served on the short-term rental committee that began all of this and put the requirements together, it was very, very specific. There was a lot of back and forth. So I'm glad we're watching it, especially that 500... so I'm glad we're watching it, especially that 500 feet, because that's what a lot of cities, as you just heard, don't have that requirement, and we need to make sure that we stay within those bounds.
And to that point, we've had 32 calls, there is one house that, out at the lake, that is for sale, we've had 32 calls, it's 485 feet from another.
Oh, my gosh. That's a question on the GIS COSA site, I don't know if you have any control over this, but, you know, you can select different layers, et cetera, on that site, is there a way, or is it just on the backend that you guys have access to, that we can actually see where the short-term rentals are?
We can look into that, we definitely have control over that, that's in, that's in my department as well. We'll have to, I don't know why there would be any reason we couldn't put that information out there, but.
Yeah, that's a good idea, okay.
All right.
All right.
With nothing else to discuss, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, six zero, it is 10:57. Thank you all.